Counselor Spangree, offer an opening prayer for us? Thank you, please.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee this evening at the start of this council meeting. We ask that thy Spirit will be with us tonight, that the decisions we make will be for the benefit of our community. We ask a special blessing to be with the Drew family tonight, Counselor Peter Drew and his wife and family, as they're going through this hard time, that they feel that thy Spirit will be with them and comfort them. We ask not that thy Spirit will be with this meeting, and we say these things something in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ.
Amen.
It's the time for the meeting, Councilor.
Call the meeting in order. Welcome. Glad to have everybody here. First on the agenda, is there any additions to the minutes there at all? Gary?
I'm sure this is kind of a late item.
Or to the agenda, I should say.
This is a late item. Can we put on, we'll call it, multi-purpose recreational facility and football stadium.
Under other business?
Yeah, it's just more of an information item.
Okay, well, so that'll be...
G, 7G?
Seven, yeah, yeah, G, yeah. Multi-purpose. Okay. Anything else for anybody? If not, I'll call for someone to move to adopt the minutes.
I'll do that for you.
Agenda.
We hope the agenda...
The minutes, that'll come, yeah. The agenda, thank you too. Okay, Mayor Cronin, move to adopt that. All in favor?
Thank you.
Gary. Okay, we have the privilege of doing a oath of office for Counselor Drew here. Good to have you here, and let the mayor take care of that. And we're all in full support.
I, Peter Drew, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to the law, the office of Counselor in the town of Christendom. So help me God.
Do I need to sign that?
Yes, he does.
Yeah.
Keep signing.
Keep signing for the job, sorry.
Didn't sign it, sorry. I'm a little...
You can't read it anyways, so...
All right. All good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Make sure your phones are all silenced, that would be really good.
Oh, yeah. I was picking at the jaw for tomorrow.
Not pointing fingers at anybody particular.
They only call, they start calling at 5:00 o'clock, already this job is coming, that's why I'm at 5:00.
There you go.
Just give us a second now.
Okay, so if you had a chance to read over the minutes, and any discussion on the minutes? Not, we'll call for, for the minutes, Counselor Spangree?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Any questions?
October 3rd, 2017.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Well, we'll move on, and I'll turn the time over to our C O for the discussion on the budget.
Thank you, I'm just looking to see if I gave you everything I intended to give you. I think I did. So what you have in front of you that's different from previous, as I've placed, and I'll go through this, this is our capital funding plan, so we do a bit of a spreadsheet on how the things get funded, what the source is, so I wanted to walk you through that, so you're familiar with that document. You also received a additional budget consideration sheet, this Nate and App by 11 with a few items on it, and a tax and utility revenue history chart. That's simply to give you some context for the last few years. That's the only point to that, it was also in your uploaded agenda. So, let me get myself in order here, I got a lot of papers going. Okay, so what I would like to do is, this sheet that I gave you, this capital funding sheet, I just wanted to walk you through it first, because we're going to be coming back to it a little bit throughout the conversation. And Hocken puts this together to show, what it does, it mimics what's in the capital budget, first of all, so everything in the big budget, it mimics it here, and then it breaks down how we intended to fund it. And the reason why this is important for you as counselors is, we're going to have to prioritize, we're going to have to move some things, we're going to have to push some things and stretch some things, but we got to look at the source of funding. So for example, if we have something specifically grant-funded, and we say, let's move that out for a recreation purpose, well, that grant funding doesn't pay for the recreation purpose. So then we have to make some other decisions. So I give it to you as an example, and I just wanted to give you the lay of the land of it a little bit. You have on the left, and the reason there's three pages is it's 2018, 19, and 20, and we won't go through the last two years in great detail at this point yet. So the first page is 2018, you see on the left, all the list of projects proposed in the budget and their costs, total cost under 2018. As you go right across the column, you start getting into breakdowns of those costs, so the first one is M S I, Municipal Sustainability Initiative, it's our largest transfer from the province. We have an agreement with the province through 2018 for that funding, and there is no guarantee or commitment for funding after the fact. So that will be a major thing to consider as we approach 2019 and 20.
Jeff, I'm wondering, it might be to appreciate the figures, maybe to recall the amount of tax dollars that the town has for revenue, which is about 2.6 million.
Yep, 2.63 is what's budgeted next year.
So that's how much we're getting from taxpayers, and we very quickly see that what we need to expand is definitely exceeding that figure. So that'll give us a point of reference.
So you see M S I pays, the nice thing about M S I is it's very, it's left largely to the discretion of the local council. So you can spend it on water and sewer infrastructure, you can spend it on recreation, you can spend it on a social service, you can spend it on a number of things. So it's a very flexible grant, which is great for us at the local level. And you can see, one thing I should make clear too, you can see at the very top of M S I, it has estimated in-year funding in 2018. We only, we only bring forward in the budget the amount we're going to use, so we actually will get more than this. We get more than this on an annual basis, but we only bring into the budget what we need to fund. So at the bottom of the page, we actually have $100,000 that is left that we carry forward to, actually, we need to put 2019 on that one, because it's 2018. But, so M S I pays, in this case, we have it for some machinery and equipment, we have it for paving, we have it for water line, we have it for a mower in parks, we have it for half of a playground, or half of an irrigation system, we have it for a lifeguard chair, some maintenance equipment at the rink, and flooring, half of that. So we start with that one, and then we go down, F G T F is the Federal Gas Tax Fund. This is from the federal government, it's passed on to the provincial governments, and the provincial government passes it down to municipalities. It is relatively flexible, we anticipate using 193,000 of that in the upcoming year. It is normally, and I say normally, this is just our history, there is no rule around this, it's normally been used for roads and underground utility. That's been where it's been focused, but it does, you can use it for other things. It does have a bit more breadth than what you can use it for, there is, there is cultural, there is recreation, and things like that that it can be used for. That is a really consistent funding, it's a percentage of the gas tax that you pay at the pumps, and then the feds disperse it through the provinces. And if I understand correctly, I think the agreement is pretty indefinite on that one. I think that's one that we consider to be pretty long-term, as a steady stream of capital revenue.
Yeah. Does that include the aquagas revenue?
No, no, not a franchise fee.
Is it just the gasoline?
No, that's just the Federal Gas Tax Fund, separate from that. One thing I should mention is that most of these federal gas tax certainly is a capital fund. They don't want you using it to pay for the lights at the library, they don't want you using it to pay for labor. It's a, it's a capital fund, and M S I is, I'm going to say largely a capital fund, but it has a little bit of discretion for things like, we use a little bit of it for road maintenance, so for gravel or oil. It, they're okay with you using it in that, because although not capital, it's an infrastructure need. So it has a little bit of discretion, but mostly these are specifically capital. So for example, if we said, well, let's not do the pavement on Second Avenue West and use that 195 for operations, it doesn't work, we can't use federal gas tax funds for operations. So as an example there. Then we have reserves, and we talked about this a bit last meeting, these are dollars we've saved up over the years that we're bringing into the budget this year. So in 2018, it's proposed that we're bringing in $65,000 of reserves to help fund the loader, and $50,000 in reserves for the water truck, and then at the bottom, $350,000 for the pool building. And then the next is the tax-funded, that's where we tax in that year and spend in that year. So it hasn't been saved, it's in 2018's tax revenues, we intend to bring it forward to fund capital expenditures. And you can see little pieces throughout, throughout that.
Jeff, can we backtrack a little? Regarding the fleet, you have a long-term projection of the life of all the trucks and whatever else that we have in that fleet, and you have it over how many years?
Well, Bard has an inventory, of course, of all the fleet, age, you know, condition, the maintenance schedules, give us an indication of a lot of that too. So it's just, for example, when we get into this budget a little bit, currently there's a truck budgeted for the electrical department, that's funded out of electrical revenues. And however, the truck it's replacing isn't the worst truck in fleet. It just so happens that electrical, for their needs, is looking for a new one, so that truck isn't the one that goes, it'll stay, and the one at the bottom of the pile, the worst condition, will go. And so we filter them through that way a little bit, even in 2017, you former counselors will recall, we bought a truck in 2017, it was budgeted through Water Waste Water, we swapped and gave Water Waste Water the old Bylaw truck, we used the water money to buy the Bylaw truck, we moved the water truck to parks, anyway, so we move them through to the best need.
Right.
But yes, they're certainly inventoried in their condition, no. And it's not solely based on age, we've got some newer ones that are, start to cost you a lot of money, they start having mechanical problems, you can see that you're just at the beginning of a, you know, domino effect of repairs, and so those end up...
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Sorry. This John Deere loader, that's the one they use for snow removal and things like that?
That one would be one that would be, I think the 554 is a smaller one, it's got the backhoe on it.
Okay. And the downtown storm water pumps, can you...
Yes.
Like, give some of us who don't know about...
Sure, yeah, actually neither did the previous counselors very well. So this is one where you can see, it's a huge ticket, first of all, huge ticket, and the intention of that project is down in front of John Bright's, and in front of Chief Mount Gas Co-op, is where we experienced severe bottleneck in storm drainage during high-water events. And so we back up and we begin to flood at John Bright's Kirk's tires, and then it goes underneath the infrastructure and starts coming out on Main Street in front of what would be the Dollar Store, used to be the Sears Building. And the reason that happens is that the outfalls into the creek get submerged, the water level of the creek gets higher than the outfalls, because when they put those outfalls in, they had recently dredged the creek. So the depth of the creek was much, much lower when the outfalls were installed in the, I want to say in the 80s sometime, I believe. I don't remember when they dredged the creek, I simply don't recall.
They dredged the creek in 76, because it was 75, but...
There's a good reason I don't remember it then.
Why, that sound big, I remember that day, thinking they should dredge the creek, and then I heard they were.
Okay.
They got forgiveness afterwards.
Yeah, so I'd feel better about not remembering that. So what happened is, over time, the levels have gotten higher, and now when we get heavy rains, our outfalls covered. What, this is a proposed, this is a proposed project that will be, hopefully, 90% funded by the province, where we would install some on-demand overland pumps in manholes down in those areas. So what will happen is, when the outfall begins to back up, it will divert to these pumps, those pumps will then pump the water overland into the creek, so that the rest of the town can continue to drain into those manholes and to those outfalls. So that's what that project is, and there's a, there's a grant right now, after the High River floods and the category, the series of floods, the province put out, I believe it was an eight-year program, and it's called the Resiliency Fund. Was it eight or 10-year, Hocken? It doesn't matter, we're three or four years into it now. And we've accessed it before for the Lee Creek intake, that's what we did the repairs on the intake last year, that were damaged during the flood. And the point of this fund is to prepare municipalities for more extreme weather events. That's the point of it. So for example, with the, with the water intake at the Lee Creek, it seems like every time we had high water, we were going in and fixing stuff, we had to fix it, we needed to repair it. So the Resiliency Fund said, do more than just fix it, do something to it so it doesn't happen again. Because disaster recovery will only pay to take it back to how it was pre-flood, even if it was inferior, they'll only pay to take it back pre-flood. So the province recognized that and said, well, we'll do this Resiliency Fund. So we have applied to the Resiliency Fund, but we don't know if we've got it yet, so this may have a dramatic change on the budget if we don't get the fund, because we simply can't fund the other 90% without some serious discussion around the table. So we put that application in, because it was due, I believe, the first of September. And that's the intent of that project, is to do overland pumping of those bottleneck areas. The second one you'll see on there, there's another one for 568,000. Or do I have it backwards here, just one second?
That's the ground.
Yeah, so that's the storm one, the next one is 761,000. And that is the same grant under the Resiliency Fund, and that one is the twinning, the North Lee Creek Chunk Twinning. So many of you may know, but others won't, all of our sanitary sewer in the town culminates at Extra Foods, it goes under a pipe under the creek, goes to a lift station, and is pumped to the sewer treatment plant. Okay, so everything culminates there and is pumped. When we have particularly high water, when we have overland rain that infiltrates manholes, when we have people pumping their, some pumps into the sanitary sewer, running their eaves trough into the sanitary sewer, that pipe becomes overwhelmed. And it's, it's a siphon, it's a dip that goes under the creek. We recently camered that, recently, in the last year, and it's slowly filling with sediment, so the capacity is decreasing all the time. And that sediment is not of a nature, we can just go in with a pressure hose and blast it out, it's not moving. And so what we've realized is, we don't have a way to take it out of service to maintain it, and it's literally the only pipe that carries all the sanitary sewage up to the treatment plant. Now, it's fine right now, in normal flows, it's totally fine, it was built to handle, you know, it could have a little reduction and still handle it. But you know, next June, we always get a little nervous, because that's when we get the rains. So that project for 761,000, again, under the Resiliency Program, 90% funded, was to twin that line, so that, for two purposes, one, we can take one side out of service for maintenance and do some work on it, and two, when there's high flows, they can both be open. They can both be open and flow, and we have capacity at the lift station to continue to move it up to the sewer plant. But we're starting to choke off in that siphon under the creek right here, east of Extra Foods.
So Jeff, I'm assuming that the sediment is coming from southwest concrete?
Well, it's, it's coming some, yes, but it's coming from everywhere, it's catching all the sanitary sewer from 75% of the town.
But it sounds to me like it's becoming solid, it's not like sediment that can be moved, as you said.
Yeah, yeah, and again, we don't know the total nature of it, we just know that our, that you, we're not, well, we're not able to go in and pressure it out, one, because we can't take it out of service. It always has flow, there's never a time when there doesn't have flow. But yes, we could assume that some of that is hardened, because it has Portland powder in it, sure.
Counselor Brown?
So will it run side by side?
Yeah.
So it'll just be exactly the same?
Yeah, going to the same lift station, joining back up in the pits at the lift station.
So the goal is, you would switch it over, run it through the other line, clean out the line, so this will never, so if it does happen again, we've got the other line to run.
That's right, we can take one out of service, we can maintain it, I mean, I'm not, I am not an alarmist by any means, but there's always that potential, if that line failed for one reason, we don't, we have a, a line under the creek flowing all the town's sanitary sewage. If it fails, we've got an environmental problem, first of all. Now, we have no indication it's going to fail, it's structurally sound, it seems fine, but it seemed to make good sense to twin it, and to make sure we had that redundant capacity.
So we get into trouble, Montreal doesn't.
I was going to say.
You were thinking the same thing?
I was exactly thinking that.
Did you see the map, not to diverge, but there was a map of about 100 communities in Quebec that they don't directly...
Right into the bay.
No treatment.
Goes right into the...
Right into the river.
Central lines, maybe.
We don't quite have the volume in the Lee that they have in the St. Lawrence, for one.
We don't have the volume of poop either, so...
No, we do not.
And our environment's on board with us going in the creek.
Oh, we do, yeah, we would get approvals. What you find with these creek excavations now is they're simply pushed, you go well under the creek, and you don't even upset the, the ground. So you push those under, and, and you get out of there. So yeah, of course, we have all of our approvals in order, and it's been designed, we've submitted it to the province, to the Resiliency Grant. That is definitely a project, like I said, if we don't get the Resiliency Fund, we've got, I think, six more years to continue to apply, to become a priority, we'd have to build maybe a stronger case, although I think we have a really good case in front of them, and, and get that done.
So of the two, sorry, of the two, the pump station's probably the more important, is how you're suggesting, if we don't get the funding this year?
It depends if you're John Bright and Kirk's Tire or not. Now, the, the impact is much greater on the twinning of the north line, because it has impact on almost all the sanitary sewer in town. The other one is a relatively acute issue. And over time, it backs up, and none of us are strangers to stormwater backup in the community. We all know that issue. But it's much more localized, for sure, because we start to get the overland issues in that downtown core. So those businesses, Sean Olson, the Dollar Store, and then going outward as that backs up, we start to get the impact there.
So you believe the North Lee Creek twinning is more important than...
Yeah, if we have to prioritize and don't get the funding?
Prioritize, yes.
We'll have to have some of that discussion, because we have, we have some, some trash pumps that we pull behind a trailer, that, as a trailer, they're on a trailer, that we can go and plop into those manholes and run them overland, which helps to a point. They're not the capacity that we would like, but we can mitigate that issue with some equipment we currently have, when we need to. Now that's if we can get there quick enough. Storms never happen in midday, during the week.
Late time.
I've been to a number of, a couple of fires and a bunch of floods, and every one of them is in the middle of the night, every one. So sometimes we lag in that response, where the pumping stations are on demand, they're sitting there with a float, on demand, ready to roll, so that is a good thing too.
On the, the John Bright sewer line there, I know a few years ago, it got plugged up with two-by-fours, and there was a Christmas tree in there, and, you know, so I guess the question is, is, are the, are the maintenance people checking those manholes now and then to make sure that there isn't junk in there? That would plug up and really create another problem, because it did that one time, that was about three years ago or so.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't promise that every storm manhole is checked every six months.
Yeah.
We had a seasonal worker this year that, he was going around working on storm and sanitary lines, camering them, flushing them, doing work on them, and we intend to continue to do that, so that there is some ongoing review of that.
That might be an area that they might want to check every once in a while, some reason that...
We find an odd amount of Christmas trees in manholes, which is disturbing, we do. It's not unusual, unfortunately.
That was definitely intentional.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's a 150-pound manhole, you don't just choose to go do that for fun.
Yeah.
So yes, unfortunately, we deal with that.
Santa Claus was doing on Christmas Eve.
Yeah. So Counselor, stop, those are those two big projects, and, and that's when on the sheet, you can see, for example, if we take, if we take that first one, the downtown stormwater pump station project, 631,000 total cost, 10% of that, 63,125, is sewer self-funded, so it's being funded out of revenues from sanitary sewer charges, and then the rest is Resiliency Fund, that's the other. And same with the other one, we have 86, 84,6 out of self-funded sewer, and then 761 from Resiliency. And that's been the benefit of having our utility rates, where if we have an opportunity for a grant like this, we have revenues to cover our portion. We've got 10% out of the sewer revenue, and, so that's a good thing, otherwise, we'd be figuring out how to fund our 10%.
Counselor Spangree?
Yeah, Jeff, I was just looking at the revenues from the domestic water billing and sewer billing and so forth, and it's almost, 2018 is almost funding these projects.
So the, the margin won't fund them all, because we got hard costs in that revenue.
Right.
So we've got plants and utilities and labor and everything.
Expenses out.
We were just discussing, there is a decent enough margin that, yes, in, you know, in 2018, we have enough margin to fund $287,000 worth of capital from sewer revenue. You know, so that's significant. And $45,000 from the, from the water revenue. So those are good things, and yeah, Counselor, that revenue has become substantial to fund capital, and if M S I goes away, it's our only...
Right.
It's our only funding for capital.
So is any of that money being put away for the 20-year plan to rebuild when necessary?
So that goes into your major utility reserve, we'll talk about that here in a minute, yeah. Yeah, I would love it, I'd love to show you a number, it's about fivefold what I'm going to show you, but yes, it is a short answer.
Okay, thank you.
And, so that's just a quick tour of the funding, and it's the same for the next two years in there. And when we present to you in December, it'll be a, a five-year, and that'll reflect a lot of what you guys start to discuss around the table too, you know, after, we'll start to see more of your priorities in the future budgets. And so that's going to develop here shortly, over the next month. So I just wanted to get that out of the way, because it's a key piece of the discussion as we go through this. Let me see, I made a couple notes, so I don't miss anything. So back to, to your budget document. I want to talk about what we did last year, but by, by no means is this how the process has to be this year, because this is your first year, it's got to be a little more in-depth. There was two major numbers we looked at last year. We looked at tax revenue, of course, you should always make that the first one, and we looked at reserves, what we were reserving. So after everything's paid, what are we putting away, Counselor Barnes, like you said, for that other stuff down the road? And so I wanted to talk about 2018, and I want to get a feel from you as a group, if this is the right direction, or it's too little or too much. In 2018, we are projecting 2.637.7 million in property taxes. Again, we have no control over the school, that's just going to be told what we're collecting, and that is what it is. So that is a 1.4% increase over last year, that number is simply what we increased last year. Now, I had a quick look, we, we have approximately 3.7 million to date in new assessment, so when we look at our total assessment for next year that we're going to tax on, it's going to be roughly probably $4 million higher in 2018 than it was in 2017, because of construction that's happened in 2017. So when you look at a 1.4% increase, if you apply the municipal portion of the middle rate to $4 million, you're going to be roughly 30 grand, and that's, we proposed an increase of about 36 grand. So new assessment, if assessments stay stable, let me caveat that largely, if Morgan Straddy comes here in February and says, assessment's down 10%, well, we have a different discussion. But all things being equal, our new assessment is going to cover the large majority of the 1.4% revenue increase, so not the existing, but the new. So that gives you a little bit of liberties in how you, or gives you a little information in how you want to look at that tax revenue going forward. And one thing that, especially for the new counselors, we have found, if we start to debate the tax rate, that's a really difficult debate, because it depends on what the school comes in at, it depends on what assessment does, it just depends on a ton of stuff, it's so subjective, it's really hard to pin that down with any meaningful discussion. So the previous two councils have focused on the revenue. Are we comfortable having next year run on essentially the same revenue as this year? Or do we want to see a little bit up? And in this case, we budgeted for an increase, but I'm very pleased that new assessment is going to cover most of that increase, that's a good thing. So the impact isn't on me and you, it's on the new assessment in the town, all things being equal.
Counselor Spangree, do you have a comment?
Jeff, throughout the budget, we've done a 2% yearly increase, and yet, we're looking at a 1.4, what would be the impact on our, on our assessments to move that to 2% also?
Yeah, good question, but, but keep in mind, we've looked at a 1.4 on the entire tax amount, and we've looked at 2% on specific line items. So when it comes to real dollars, the 1.4 on the almost 3 million is a much bigger real dollar than the 2% on 20 or 30 accounts, on, on smaller items. So in real dollars, you're, but you make a good point, that if you're anticipating a 2% inflation on everything that's subject to inflation, is 1.4... is 1.4 a reasonable increase? The answer may be no. But they're both estimates. You know, we put in a number to estimate as best we can, but in real dollars, it's covering that inflation on the other accounts.
Well, my concern is the MSI funding. You know, if we look at a 1.4 and don't get our MSI funding, then we're out of luxury.
Yeah, we haven't. One thing I should mention that, with MSI, there's actually, what I showed you on this sheet was the capital portion. There is actually a small operating portion. Do you remember what that number is, Hocken? 113?
For, sorry.
MSI operating.
MSI operating is 168.
168.
Yeah.
So we do get some operations money through MSI as well, which is great. And we just don't know what those look like next year, after 2018.
That's what I say.
Yeah.
So the funding that we get, is it a, is it the type of funding that can be taken away? Or, and every municipality asks for that money, and the province gives that to us, right?
So MSI formula is based on a combination of per capita. So it's distributed per capita, kilometers of road, and equalized assessment. So it takes into account what's the total assessment of the assets in your municipality, your kilometers of roads and your people. It's highly on the per capita. It's weighted. And it's heaviest on the per capita. So it's a formula that is, it's not a competitive grant, which is great, because you don't have to make sure you got the better grant writer, you've hired the better engineering firm to get it. Because that burdens the small munis a lot more than the large centers. So it is a per capita grant for the last, what, oh, I sat on a, I actually sat on a provincial panel on MSI funding, and I just forgot the inception year of it. 2007, 2006. 2006, and it was intended to be a 10-year grant. There was always an exit, there was always an end to it. And then, of course, what happens, as you can imagine, we all became quite fond of that money over 10 years.
Depended.
And our budgets reflected it. So what we saw, this is maybe just Jeff getting a little philosophical there, what we saw, 2006 to 16, is we saw assessment increases across the province, which created cash, because now my house, it used to be worth 75 grand, is worth 175, and I got to pay more taxes now. So we created cash through assessment, we created cash through MSI funding, because everything was good. Oil was rolling, province had money, all was well. And now assessment has stabilized, it's flat, and the province is in amazing amounts of debt. And so they're starting to say, prepare yourselves, people, remember there was going to be an end date? And in 2016, everybody freaked out, everybody hit the roof, and lobbying, and weeping, and wailing, et cetera. And so the province said, all right, we're going to sign an agreement for two more years. We're going to guarantee MSI funding at its current level for 2017 and 18, and we're going to work towards an alternative. That's been the rhetoric from the province. We're going to work towards an alternative. What that looks like, we don't know.
Jeff, that committee that you were on.
Yeah.
Was that what that committee was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a year ago, I was asked by AUMA to sit on a committee to discuss long-term funding from the province, how that should look. So I represented towns. So it was actually kind of, I've told the previous council, I went to this meeting, and there was Calgary, and Edmonton, Red Deer, Fort Mac, and Jeff, and somebody representing villages. So it was a little intimidating, to be honest, but what came out of it is, the group said, our recommendation is, we understand the province has no money. Who can debate that? There's nobody debating that the economic reality is different than it was in 2000, or 2004, 2005 particularly. Very different economic reality. And the municipalities, we understand that we maybe need to share some of that risk with the province. So our recommendation was an indexed fund based on a number of.
And then it's on us to be disciplined with that money.
So the province essentially said, we're going to sign two more years to give us some time to figure this out, and what that might look like. And you're going to hear a lot about this at AUMA, I'm sure you are. I'm sure this will be a point of discussion in the upcoming conferences and upcoming sessions, but that was the intent of that group, was to look at alternatives. So that's an important revenue for us in the town.
Councillor, if I may digress, you see me picking up my phone again as well. The substitute teaching calls come after 5 o'clock. Usually I don't get any, but I've had four already. And I'm able to answer. So if I'm actually answering the phone, I'm still listening, I'm just seeing if there's a substitute teaching job. This doesn't usually happen.
Want a motion to that fact?
No, that's just a point of information. Not to be rude, I'm not on my phone while everything else is going on here.
So councillor.
Jeff, last council, about the last two meetings, we discussed census. And as it reflects to MSI funding and other funding, should we be considering that?
Well, it's on the list, and we'll be specifically hold your thought on that one, because I think I know where you're going, and we need to discuss that. MSI is one of the only grants, well, yeah, it's one of the only that weighs as heavily on per capita as it does. Federal gas tax would as well, yeah. So those do. And then we get into the competitive grant structure, which isn't related to per capita anymore, like resiliency grant, for example. There's no per capita piece on that, it's case by case, business case by business case, what you supply and show the impact, so. I think it was councillor Drew.
Thanks. So the MSI grant is sustainable for another couple of years?
Through next year, through 2018.
Okay.
Correct.
And there will be a, it'll be morphed into something, we think.
We are hopeful. Yeah, we are hopeful. There's no guarantee that that 800,000 is ours in 2019 forward. That's the, that's the risk. Now, it's so interesting, when I went to this meeting, I found, we have a number of municipalities in the province that took out huge, long-term debentures, and the province allowed them to use future MSI as the guarantee. And after 2018, they may not get their MSI. So you're, you know, we would definitely be inconvenienced by such a move, but you've got other municipalities that may get loans called, because they no longer have the MSI coming. One of the things, and this isn't terribly uncommon, and you can see the reason, federal gas does this as well. You can use the future payments to borrow a larger sum now for a larger project. So what if we needed to do something that wasn't 800 grand? It was 5 million. And so we could go to the Capital Finance Authority, or we could go to a conventional bank and say, look, we're going to get 800 grand a year, and we're going to allocate 500,000 of that a year to pay off the debenture on a 10-year debenture. They would allow that. The province allowed you to do that. The problem was, there's some people that are, use it as their payment method far beyond 2018. And shame on them is my only, when that came around the table, I said, well, that's your decision. Not my problem, really. And I didn't want it to complicate the discussion with the province, but councillor Drew, we don't know what it looks like yet. My hope is that it's an indexed fund, that it comes in somewhere between 600 to 900 a year for the town of Carson, so impact is minimal. But I, anyone's guess is as good as mine at this point.
It's interesting. I was reading today, I can see the province is really starting to get nervous, and now Premier Naughtley has announced that she's doing a three-provence tour to promote drilling and promote the oil business to pick up, and it didn't start out that way, they were very anti, but now they're realizing that's where our bread and butter is.
Yeah.
And that, and so they're, they're starting right away to get out there.
So I guess what started this is one of the first conversations we'd request from council, and we can talk about some other things, too, but obviously, we need over the next month, some direction on tax revenue. What's an acceptable level for you? Because we'll build a budget around whatever that level is. Now, if that's, if you say it's 1.4, we've built a budget around 1.4. Now, I have $355,000 of items on the outside looking in, that by no means are number one priorities. They're not. Some of them are nice things and warm and fuzzy things, but they're not top priority things. But we do need some guidance, because what happens to, in fact, if you don't mind, go to page 11 on your budget document, because this addresses councillor Barnes' question from earlier on. And we talked about this briefly last meeting. On page 11, and it's the last line of operating expenses, 294762. It's major utility capital reserves. Essentially, what we've done with that account, and the previous council set this up, is surplus goes there, reserved for those major utility projects, funding those in the future. And we flex that number. That number's going to change three or four more times before you actually pass a middle rate. Because if you say, we're okay with a 3% revenue increase, and we can still keep expenses where they are, then that number's going to go up. We're going to put the excess there. If you come in and say, no, we're holding the line, but these are definite priorities, they don't move, then that number's going down. That's our, that's our bit of flexibility, that's our cushion we use, and we, we are reserving what we can within the budget.
Mayor, councillor Bangle?
For me, it boils down to a matter of philosophy. What is this council willing to do? See taxes increase? Or keep them at a level where people in this town can live in this town and feel comfortable keeping their homes when the taxes are not exploding? That's what happened for the past seven years. We were very, very conservative, yet spent money on capital projects quite a bit, had quite a few grants, and used the MSI wisely. So that, I think, is where the discussion needs to start, is what is the appetite of this council regarding tax increases beyond inflation recovery? And essentially, we need to realize that in other municipalities around us, that was definitely an election issue. People were tired of taxes going up and up and up. So what is this council willing to do? So I think that's where we have to start.
Councillor Bangle?
But Mayor, with your comments, there's a reality there that, yeah, we can hold the taxes down, but if we don't want to increase taxes, do we stop doing business?
But that's not what I'm saying.
No, but that's what we've got, there's a reality into a tax increase. And, you know, $17 or $18 isn't going to kill somebody. But there's a reality that we need to look at this, so that we don't have a majestic jump in the, in the two or three years from now, when we have a major, major problem.
Councillor Shaw?
Jeff, in relation to other communities around us that are our size, it's our tax assessment, like.
Like our assessment per capita, like how much we have in value for people we have?
Yeah. You know, in terms of our assessment versus, say, Graff or Raymond.
Yeah, yeah.
Medium-high, if I remember in the curve.
I actually can give you exactly that in just one second here, because I happen to have that graph. And actually, you do, too, but you don't know it yet, because it's in our orientation package material. I do know, so we're, we're at about 89,000 per capita, if I remember my numbers right. $89,000 of assessment per capita. The county around us is at about 160, I believe. Raymond is the lowest in almost the province at about 68, if I recall. And then McGrath is close to us. Pincher Creek's a bit, Pincher Creek's actually about 100,000, if I recall, they're a bit higher than us. Our, we're, if I were to take a wild guess at, and I'll pull it up here, but if I, I don't want to say wild guess, I want to say educated guess, that sounds much more competent. If I were to take an educated guess at Southern Alberta, Calgary South, from low to high, we're in the 40th percentile, 35th to 40th percentile of assessment per capita. So we're in the lower, higher end of the lower half. There is, and bear with me for one second, and I think I can pull this up. And I can tell you fairly, and we'll go over this in a bit, too.
When you're pulling that up?
Yeah.
I just want to ask a question. How many of you read the article in Municipal World about the tax, you know, the virtues of holding the line or spending a little on the taxes to keep, make sure that you're not, you know, cut, selling yourself short and not having enough money to cover the expenses and unexpected ones?
Mayor?
What I really believe to concur with your comment, councillor Bangle, is that we know what we need to replace, we know what we need to do to be able to have our utilities, or storm, or sewer, or water line in place to carry on with our capital plan for the next 15 years, 20 years. So we know that those are very important things. So we need to work with those demands also, and not push them one year after the other. This is why you run into trouble with taxes. If we, if we keep it at a proper level, remembering that a little bit for reserve is important, a little bit for rainy days is important, and being able to accomplish those important, needed capital projects will require a certain amount of taxes, there's no doubt. So we're going to have to work with the need, not the frills.
But however, Mayor, there's no frills built into a complete breakdown of our sewer treatment plan.
But that's what I'm saying, that needs to be looked after. Those are priorities.
So, what are you telling me, Jeff, is that we're not outrageous in terms of our assessment?
No, so I pulled up, now, this is two years dated, because Municipal Affairs was terribly behind on this, but, and we'll go through this with you a little later. $87,453 per capita. The median of all towns in Alberta, so taking the median, is 109.
Are you guys talking about the same thing?
I was talking about assessment.
You're talking about property assessment per capita. Are you talking about people's tax bill?
Right.
Okay.
Both.
Okay. So I can answer that a little bit, too. So let's talk about value of assets per capita. So what we can tax per capita. Because the lower, hypothetically, you apply a higher rate to get the same money as someone with a higher assessment per capita. So we're at 87,000, the median across the province for towns is 109. Now, to your question here, because I think this will also answer it. It's here, I know it's here. There is a graph that gives us the, bear with me. The revenue source per capita. Okay, so what Municipal Affairs does is they said, we're going to take total residential, or total taxation and divide it by per capita. So the town of Cardston in 2015, and this has stayed really stable, actually, since 2010, is $701 per capita. So we are taking in $701 per person that lives in the town in taxes. The median for the province is 1,048. Now, one of the. So we're taking in about $300 less per year in taxes per capita than other communities.
Less the median, there'll be some other.
Oh, the range goes all the way to almost 1,300. The range starts at about 600, and we're at 700, and the range goes to almost 1,300.
We're very low.
So we're on the low end now, but I want to qualify that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to qualify that, is that there's other things factored in, and that's what I, that's what this shows, this little graph I gave. Tax rates and tax revenues have stayed flat. Assessment's stayed flat, debt's gone down, but utilities have gone up 18.8%. So that's not a per capita tax revenue, that's a per capita user fee revenue. And so the problem with analyzing that with the province is, the electrical department factors in the towns.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
Which only like four other people do that. So we're an anomaly. When we look at the range on user fees per capita, we're right at the top, because we take in, you know, seven figures in distribution revenue from the electrical department. Divide that by per capita, it looks like we have these amazing per capita revenues, but we also have an offsetting expense. It doesn't consider, now, it does consider expense per capita, and so taking everything collectively, it shows. But the previous council, and I hope this doesn't come across to the previous councillors in a bad way, you chose to tax differently. You simply chose to tax through utilities versus property tax. So you increased utility rates every year, which created great and increased revenues in the utility, and I think got us, in my opinion, got us. in the utility, and I think got us, in my opinion, got us to a point where we need to be on those utilities. And by the way, under the bylaw, this council will be reviewing that entire utility bylaw next summer. But you simply chose to tax differently. And you didn't do it through property taxes, you did it on a user-based system through utilities. And as an aside, it also gave you the opportunity to collect more from the non-taxable properties than on a property tax increase. So the schools, the churches, the provincial buildings, the hospital, the seniors' facilities. We got increased revenue out of those facilities because they pay utilities, but they don't pay taxes.
And higher rate, too.
Well, the commercial do, yeah, or institution, the institutional pay a higher rate, 'cause they, they don't pay any taxes. So it was a shift in paradigm on how to tax. Counselor Barfus was always preaching, "You're simply taking it out of a different pocket." He made that very clear, he was totally right, and no one was disagreeing. He just wanted to be very clear, "We're increasing taxes just in a different way." And that's what I wanted this to reflect. Counsel, the previous council, you remember I brought this graph and it didn't have utility revenues? And the direction was, "It's not telling the story." Bring it back with utility revenue, so it shows the story. We can pat ourselves on the back on the first three numbers tremendously, 'cause they all stayed flat in town. But the other one said you had an eighteen percent increase in utility revenue, which is a considerable revenue for the town. So that was a philosophical, different way to tax.
But it allowed, if you don't mind me saying something...
Pardon me?
Can I ask something?
Yes, absolutely.
It, it allowed those non-taxable property to be part of the revenue collection for the town. And so that was not a bad thing, considering that even the lodges were now non-taxable.
And for the benefit of particularly the new councillors, we also know, we looked at this, talking, you remember, I wanna say three or four months ago, we looked at where we sat in the market compared to all the other communities with respect to utilities. So with water, sewer, storm sewer, garbage, recycling, we, we kinda looked at where, if I remember, and I could bring it back to the table, we had a comparison of almost, where there must have been fifty municipalities on there, and we found ourselves almost smack in the middle, is where we found ourselves. So even after those increases over four years, we find ourselves almost on the median with respect to overall utility costs.
So really, we were very similar to where we are with our taxes anyways. So we didn't go to an extreme either way.
Yeah, we're, we're kinda right down the middle on those. Yeah.
We gotta remember, we lost the Schnuck Foundation taxes.
But that's what I was starting to... That's right.
Yeah, so the, the history on that one is, the province used to provide us with grants in lieu of taxes. So on provincial buildings or seniors' care facilities that weren't being taxed, they gave us some grants. And two years ago, I believe, when we were, those went away.
Yep.
So we lost our grants in lieu of taxes, which it wasn't devastating, it's just a bummer, because that's money you got used to. You got it because you weren't taxing them. And so that kind of reinforced this notion of the utility rate. You know, the hospital is a huge user. The temple might be the largest domestic water user in town. The Schnuck Foundation, the Good Sam's are huge domestic water users. And yet they weren't taxed, so...
So Jeff, in reality, if I can mention, the 1.4% increase, can you give us a real quick, what would, what would increase to bring it up to 2%?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand dollars?
That's how much tax revenue would bring in?
Yeah. Going from 1.4 to two is...
So it's not significant?
Not a lot of money.
So how would it play on our citizens?
So that'd be a dollar or two per household?
So eleven hundred, eleven hundred taxable properties on fifteen thousand, buck fifty apiece, buck forty apiece. So that's, that's minor, to say the least. I think my math was right there. Sure. Keep your milk jugs.
You've already got a plan for how you're gonna pay for this.
That's forward-thinking, Counselor. So what I hope this gave you, Counsel, is a bit of context into a number of items in the budget. This is a tricky document. I mean, we're going to get, we're gonna pass a budget in December, because we have to. Whether it's last year's budget, we're gonna pass something, but then you're gonna be, have all these changes in requisition amounts, and we're gonna have this discussion again in April, because we have to. You know, if we don't know about resiliency funding, for example, if we don't know the answer to that, that's gonna have a significant impact on the budget, whether we get it or not. So there's a few of those things, that it's a bit of a messy program. But, you know, the last council was going on, what do we wanna reserve? What's our appetite for taxation? Now, your tax bylaws leveled off, or, sorry, 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 your utility rate bylaw, your utility rates have leveled off. So there was some aggressive growth, and now they've, they've kind of stayed relatively static. And there's a small increase in the consumption piece, I believe, in 2018. I think there's, there's a few cents on the water on the consumption piece, if I'm not mistaken. Not in cubic meter usage.
No.
I think we go from ninety-five cents to a dollar a cubic meter?
Yeah.
Something like that, like, so there was a negligible, I shouldn't say negligible, that's not fair, there's a minor increase in 2018 on, on the utility. But it's not the aggressive growth curve that was initiated two councils ago. Counselor Corr, I think you were there when we started, I think we started having some pretty aggressive utility discussions near the end of that term.
Yeah, we were there.
And so that's leveled off. So you, now what you have in my, in my crystal ball is, you're gonna have flat assessment outside of new growth. So we anticipate four million in new assessment, but existing assessment, in my estimation, is gonna come in pretty flat. We're not gonna anticipate big growth there. You're gonna anticipate relatively flat utility revenues after 2018. But you're also gonna have sustained population and sustained assessment, is how I would take that as well. You know, we have other communities having the same discussion. Drayton Valley last year lost forty percent of their assessment in one year. You know, it was very difficult.
Mayor, you had a comment after?
Mayor and Jeff, at our, at our AMA convention on Matusi before, what are we gonna use that meeting for, most of that meeting?
I sent you the agenda. Oh, but yours hasn't been working.
Yeah, right.
It has tablets sitting on my desk. I'll give it to you before you go.
Is it working?
Yeah. I'll give you the agenda before you, actually, it should be on your whole one, too.
As, can we do budget in that agenda?
My personal opinion is, you won't have time for budget. But there is nothing stopping you from having a full budget meeting if we get to the end of this month and you're not comfortable where we are.
Well, there's a lot to be...
Oh, no question, no question.
Are you talking an extra meeting, or...
We'll see, that's your, that's your call solely. But if we get to the November meeting where we present you the second draft of budget, and you're simply not sure where those priorities are, by all means, let's have a meeting in December. No question, just on budget, sure. That would be reasonable.
We, we have done that in...
Yeah. So the one other thing I wanted to touch on was this little eight and a half by eleven. And, and again, I wanna preface that there is some, priority maybe isn't the right word, but I wanna talk briefly about each of these and why they're on this list. These aren't things we thought, "Let's make a list with three-hundred-and-fifty-five grand on it and grab stuff." There's some context behind these things. So the one that, the first one on there is the Rotary Project. So let me give you a quick history on this. I fully appreciate, well, I've, I've gone through this speech before, so some of you have heard this before. I fully appreciate the Rotary Club and their involvement in the community the last few years. It's been more, much more aggressive the last few years, and it's been great. Things like the Lions Park Playground, we certainly couldn't have done without that, them pushing that agenda and raising funds and getting the community behind it, great. What happened this year is, they've come to the council mid-budget discussion and said, "We've got a four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar project we'd like to do, and we need a hundred thousand dollars to send this ninety-seven, we need ninety-seven thousand dollars from the town, and we need a letter of commitment right now on that." Well, you folks hadn't been elected yet. It was, what was it, two weeks before the election, a month before the election?
Two weeks.
And the previous council said, "We haven't started budget discussions yet, it's not reasonable that we give you a letter of confirmation that we're gonna give you the ninety-seven thousand dollars." So we wrote a letter, I drafted up a letter that basically said that if the Rotary Club was successful in procuring the other three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, that this council would entertain our portion of that in future budget discussions, but at this point could not guarantee anything. That's what the letter said. And while that was the best we could do, frankly, for the councils that were here, it wasn't reasonable to say that you, as a new council, were gonna prioritize that hundred thousand dollars. Couldn't tell them that. So what happened is, they took that letter, they submitted it to the grants people, and the, actually, the CFEP people phoned me and said, "This seems like a really conditional letter." I said, "Yeah, intentionally worded it that way, because my council hasn't met, we haven't discussed budget. It may be December before we are comfortable saying that is or isn't a priority." And so that's where that stands right now. The Rotarians would love for you folks to say, "I move to fully fund everything they ask for, and let's go in 2018." That would be ideal for them. I like the project, and I know that there's a couple Rotarians that will suggest I don't, and that's simply because I've struggled with the timing of the project. I think that the project in and of itself is a good thing, but what happened is, with the, with the Lions Park Playground, we were already intending to replace the Lions Park Playground. It was in council's capital budget to replace Lions Park Playground. So when they came along and said, "Hey, we could help you with this, and we could do a great project," that just fit. The council had money set aside, we were already planning it, it worked, and it was an awesome project. Frankly, in the five-year capital budget, Esprit Park hasn't been on the radar. Not to say it can't be, but it wasn't. And so we have things like what we call the South Totlot, south of the cobblestone. We have a number of recreation infrastructure pieces that need funding. Current infrastructure we currently own that needs upgraded or improved. And we also know that there are other things that were on that agenda, on the, the budget, that are a quasi-priority, that they'll have to be bumped if this jumps into place. So the frustration for me has been that, that I think it's a great project, and I think there's a time and a place for it, and I'm struggling to make it fit in 2018, when they're requesting it too. Obviously, you have full discretion over that to make it happen, but that's the context. They're looking for you to say, "You bet, we're gonna make sure you got ninety-seven thousand dollars." And that's a, that's a big muscle.
Have you had a discussion with Dr. Justin Lo in the last two days?
Not in the last two days. We talked, I wanna say, last, mid-last week? It was prior to the Dynadance, anyway.
He suggested to me last night on, that there's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that they need to jump on pretty quick. I thought he was gonna come talk to you about that today.
I, I haven't heard from him.
Okay, then he'll, that's his baby, then.
Now, one thing to note in the CFEP grant. CFEP is Community Facility Enhancement Program. It's lottery funds, that's what funds it. And you have thirty months from the date of being awarded the grant to complete the project. So it actually doesn't have to be in 2018, right? The CFEP folks would be great to issue it, it comes out of this year's budget, it's gonna land in the bank, we reserve it, and we look at 2019, when we have a little more due diligence time. And the Rotarians, at least Dr. Lowe, Dr. Justin Lo, is amicable to that. He understands that we've, they've put us, put you in a bit of a spot. Now, there's not more money in 2019 than there was in 2018, but it gives us a little bit of heads up, it gives us a little time.
Counselor Corr, and then Mayor?
I'm surprised he didn't talk to you, because he said something about another letter, that's what he was looking for, but I guess that's just up to him. I'm not being rude, it's a sub-call here.
At the Rotary Dinner, I had the chance to chat with Counselor Lemire of the Chief and Counsel, and telling me that they were very interested in that project, and she thinks that Chief and Counsel would be on board to help the Rotary. So if that is the case, I think they need to try to coordinate their effort with Chief and Counsel, because that might become the third source of funding that could help us absorb that amount of money.
So that's just something to keep in mind when we're discussing priorities. It's not in the budget now, it's on the outside looking in. And so that's the context on that one.
No, I just have a question in regards to, do we have a land for it yet? Like, has that...
We haven't had that discussion.
No, we haven't had that.
So we're literally just talking money right now?
That's right.
That's exactly where it's at? Okay.
Yeah, so what happened, and, and I think, first of all, everyone's intentions have been good here, but there's been a few things lost in translation. The Rotarians came and presented to the previous council and said, "We'd like your support on the project." And the council said, "We think in principle, it's a great thing." That's it. And in some ways, that was taken as, "It's a green light, let's go." And that's unfortunate. There was just a bit of miscommunication. They have a preferred site, and I don't totally object to the site either, but we just haven't seen how that's gonna fit.
Which is?
Town Square. Yeah, so there's water infrastructure there, there's washroom there, you know, there's already some infrastructure there, but I have this fear of a ball, home run coming out and smacking some kid on splash pad. Like, there's a few things we have to work out, and that might simply mean ten-foot fences there, it could, there's a number of things we could do. So they have some ideas, and, and we just, we gotta work through that a little bit over the next few weeks of how that might look.
You have a comment?
Yeah, Jeff, you should have a fear of Counselor Barnes and Counselor Bangle on location at the Town Square, because I'm, I'm thinking of seniors, you know, for, for a couple of projects for the seniors, because of the washroom and the location and so forth.
We've been talking with the council about a bocce ball area, and they, I went up with Randy Russell, and we, and I went with the delegation of the seniors, and we all kinda agreed that right beside the tennis courts and the bathrooms, there's room for three bocce ball courts in there, and that was thrown out there, but so far, it's kinda, it's still floating around there, then, and all that, then Rotary come, and they're, they're trying to buy for the location there, and, and, so what do you do? I mean, the seniors deserve some consideration, and I guess that's something we're, we're gonna have to discuss in our planning meeting. Not here at this time, but down the road, and I've got it written down here for, to bring it up, man.
Maybe it's time we reconsider the usage of the Town Square.
Pardon me?
Maybe it's time to reconsider the usage of the Town Square. Mostly, you know, there's floating around out there another idea for putting ballparks somewhere else. And that might be something we might wanna look at in a couple of weeks when we talk.
Throw that on your information there, at the, at our planning, that would be great to discuss.
'Cause we had some discussion about getting rid of the Southwest Bald Island. It's a really, not a, a full Bald Island anyway. And now you have a nice canvas, you have a space to do some things. So, yeah, that, that'll come up, we'll go through that. Like I said, this, this budget's still gonna be greatly impacted by everything we talked about on the 21st. There's a lot to happen between now and December.
Let me just throw up the seniors' exercise thing that, that we had talked about at one time, and then Jan Baath passed away in the middle of all that project, and so her sister's trying to revive that, and so that was something that we looked at very favorably, too. Counselor Drew?
Just curious, the seniors right now do bocce ball...
Wherever they can find a spot, they can find a spot.
They've been going in between the two diamonds, there's some laneways there, yeah.
They've been getting a lot of flack, because they go up there with a lawnmower, and they cut the lawn, and then Randy gets mad at them, so...
Or the Sprague...
Yeah, or Sprague gets busted, you know, it's, it's, it's not a good situation.
But more importantly, when I talk to the seniors, they're looking for wheelchair accessibility. They wanna be able to drive right up. They wanna have bathrooms that are close enough, because having it there on Town Square theoretically doesn't make sense. We looked at possibly having it up by the soccer park, right next to the bathrooms, right next to where the parking is. There's that huge area that we could use it. So I mean, we have other land options.
And I really like that option, myself.
Yeah, I, I like it because it's, it's senior, it's senior-friendly. It, it just is.
So we can discuss that in our planning, too.
But you remember, infrastructure lends to this project.
I really think that today we should really stay with a big framework, to be able to move, move forward, because we still do not have the final touch on the revival of the Town Square, all the plans that will happen. So everything is contingent, I think that we really don't have full knowledge of. So maybe we want to go back on track, possibly.
So I'll hit these really quick, 'cause I know the night's getting late here, too. The next thing, basketball court and Frisbee Golf Course, those two items, those have come, well, I think one is coming for it, but they've been to the rec committee. Basketball court was, was recommended last year of starting to add basketball courts through the community, either at totlots or in specific locations, starting to build some of those. I think it's a great idea, we just need to determine the right spot, and where, and how much, and a lot of... We just need to determine the right spot, and where, and how much, and all those things. So, that's one of them. Sidewalk project, we could've been a little more vague, sorry about that. We were just talking, and it matches one of the capital projects, Brandon just brought this in. One of the capital projects is to redo the paving from Fifth Avenue. So if you turn at the provincial building, go up top, from the junior high to pass the soccer park, heading east, that asphalt's pretty rough.
Tough enough.
And so the discussion was, from Fourth to Seventh, do we redo the asphalt? Which is in the capital budget, but we'll talk about that. And Brandon said, "If we're gonna go down that road, we should probably complete the sidewalk in front of the junior high, and add a concrete curb all the way across the soccer park parking lot to hold in the gravel and the aggregate, and to give an edge for the asphalt." And that would need to go almost all the way down. So that's that $50,000, is what that is. Storm sewer first to Second East. If you go on Second Street East, which is, go up to Rick's Auto and hang a left, at the low point in that street, between there and the mayor's home, or the end of there, there's a storm sewer drain. And it is an old, old, old storm sewer drain. We don't know when, but I think in the last couple of years, it has kinda started to collapse in. It's, there's roots getting into it, and it's not draining. So those poor residents start to watch a lake build in front of their home. When there's drainage. And the problem is, it's old enough, there is infrastructure built over it now. We can't go excavate it. There's stuff on it. There's people's homes, and carports, and sheds, and everything else. But what we can do is we can pipe burst it. So we can go on the one side and we can send a new pipe, we, they, they send a thing that breaks the existing pipe and pulls a new pipe right behind it. And so you don't have to disrupt anything. And Bart is recommending that we find a home for that project. Because what's gonna happen is, we're gonna lend to having some overland flooding up there if we can't drain it.
Are we talking about by the trailer?
Yeah, so, north of that a bit, yeah. If you go up there and drive, you'll see it's, it's the geographically low spot on that street. And those, those folks there get a little nervous when it rains, rightfully so. They get a little nervous, and, and so we now have the ability, we've, we haven't had the ability at the town to camera lines before. This is only the last couple of years. We have a vacuum truck, we have a flushing truck, and we have a camera trailer. And so now they can go up and run the camera down and say, "Oh yeah, this thing's broken." You know, we, we've done other things, like we've epoxy lined a sewer line before. Because it had a number of problems, but this is not one that there's enough structure to epoxy line. So for example, there's a sewer line that goes under Zenith Gainer Store and under Holland Insurance. It's a sanitary sewer line. And in 19 ought-something, they put it in and then built buildings over it. So we epoxy lined the whole thing, it was quite a neat technology. So it's good to go for a while, but this, that's the technology needed here. Recycling facility, the last council made a motion to begin to acknowledge the need for enhanced recycling facilities in the community. And we didn't really determine, the council today didn't really determine what that looked like. It was just they wanted it acknowledged in future budgets. So Hocken and I sat down and scratched our heads about this, and by the way, we, I have a little thing to talk about recycling later in the agenda, is, what does that look like? And there's a couple ways we can approach this. One is we can begin to reserve every year till we have enough to do something of substance. And by substance, we need a new building. The wind's gonna come up and blow that thing over one day up there. That wheels and tracks building is a piece of junk. We took it for taxes, who knows how long ago, I don't ever know. And it was in bad shape then, it's now a lot better now. The, the structure just isn't there.
And it leaks.
And it's cold, and it's small, and the concrete's broke up through it, it's, it's not great. But our association does a great job of using it for what it is. They do a really good job. If money wasn't a real big object, I'd love to see us put them in a brand-new, either steel frame or sprung structure that gives them more square footage, better warmth, better, better everything to do their work. So the question is, do we start putting away for the next 10 years? Or, Hocken and I were having a number of discussions around, we already collect a recycling fee. And in fact, Hocken, if you can remind me, that $43,000, that's not an arbitrary number, what was that made up of again?
So that's if we charged every ratepayer $2 extra per month for a enhanced recycling facility fee.
So the recycling fee went from $3 to $5, for example. Because there's a recycling fee on the NMAX bill now, it's only, it's about $3, isn't it? Does that sound right? So if it went from $3 to $5, for example, that would net us $43,000 a year to put towards it. So we're just kicking that around, we need to talk about what that looks like. If council, if you, as a group feel, know, we want a $500,000 building up and functional and running in 2019, well, either we add $20 a month as a recycling fee, or we debenture the building and we use the $43,000 a year to pay the debenture. And we work with the Services Society to, I mean, this is a great CIP or CFEP grant application. You know, 50 cent dollar applications, those are great grant applications for that kind of use. So we work with them to make application for some 50 cent dollars, and we, we start that process. If that's the intent of council to do substantial infrastructure improvement in a short time. So it's just, we can look at it either way. The municipal census, this is what Counselor Banger brought up. There was some discussion after the 2016 census came out, that it, it was flat. Really, it was five more people from 2011. That perhaps it wasn't capturing, and the federal census people weren't doing the thorough job that local census takers could do. And there was some discussion about, maybe it's time for the town to do a municipal census. We have not done an internal municipal census in a long time that I'm aware of, I just don't know. I don't know off the top of my head. And so that's about $8,000, and that was discussed. The reason you would do one is on things that are per capita-based. If your methodology for the census was sound, that will be your new population for the purposes of per capita grants. Okay, so that was the theory, that if that was low, if it's 100 low, or 200 low, or 300 low, do we do it, and do we get a good return on investment on that $8,000? And the answer is potentially yes and potentially no. I have a suspicion that we have a lot of unique residences, we have unique buildings and places that maybe not being accurately reported with a federal census. That's a bit of my feeling. So, and the other one was the Frisbee Golf that was probably coming forward as a recommendation, sorry, Hocken.
Well, on the census, the other thing too is, we also have a lot of requisitions that are per capita-based.
Right, right.
So they would also use that number, so kinda what's the, would you actually make any money if you did a municipal census?
If I recall, and you may remember this, or some of you previous councils, we did a bit of a quick look at. And I think we netted $60 a person to the positive. If MSI stays like it is.
Right, yeah.
And so to your, your count, what you were alluding to, Counselor Banger, is if MSI goes away, well, now that $60 per capita goes down to almost negligible. You have your federal gas tax on for 200 grand, but that goes down a lot. So we were, I believe, I believe we're $60 per capita benefit after increased requisitions. All things being equal. Because requisitions will change every year too. But, something along those lines, so we felt there was a net benefit. You have a number of communities, I was talking with Banff, they do pretty regular ones. McGrath and Raymond do them every year. I would make a bit of a statement, that's not necessary. Lethbridge does them quite often, so there is rationale for them, communities see a reason to do them. The problem you get into is when you get like a Raymond, where your number is so different between your municipal and your federal census, you start questioning the methodology of both.
And they're growing.
And they're growing.
Yeah. And so their federal census showed they decreased by hundreds of people. You know, that, that's the problem, if you get a real disparity, there's some concerns there. You start to wonder if one's inflated or one's missing something, so it doesn't.
Jeff, let me ask you a sort of pretty quick question. Let's say Richard Banger is in the DAL, and Jan Banger is in her home.
Yeah.
Does that count as two?
Your individual, yeah, anyone in the DAL is a resident, counts as a census, for sure.
We've got a lot of occupants up in the DAL. We've got a lot of occupants in Temple City, a lot of Schmitt Foundation. And I'm just wondering if the federal census is taking those institutions into account.
So the DAL was the big catalyst for discussing a municipal census? Because between 2011, 2016, the DAL was built, and it's full, and there's 120 rooms there. So the theory was there was at least another 150 people potentially in the DAL. And we certainly don't see vacancy in our rentals or other homes within the community. So that was part of the question, are institutions being properly accounted for, or not? So that's just something to consider, because we're an hour and 20 minutes in, so I apologize, but this is some necessary conversation for context. At the end of the day, council, we, we need some direction about those big things like, do we have any appetite for revenue increases? Do you want the budget built around the same number? And are any of those items on that list saying, "Work them in, tell us how that's gonna work, and tell us what goes out?" Those are the kinda things we want a little bit of a feel, even if it's preliminary, because we got a number of drafts of this still to come.
So, Counselor Banger, then the mayor, and then?
Just to backtrack a little bit on the recycling. Provincial government is looking at it very seriously. And we talked about recycling because it would reduce our input into the regional landfill. So our costs of operating regional landfill.
But the last grant?
The ACP grant said no.
They threw it out. So they say one thing on one hand, and then they don't support it, money worries the other hand.
I wonder if they'll discuss this.
So that's not exciting, I'm sorry?
I wonder if they'll discuss this, I wonder.
Well, I can tell you on ACP, Alberta Community Partnership Grant, province has a grant out that a few years ago was intended for municipalities that would work together. I think it was at least, well, initially it was at least three, then it was two. There was some money for those initiatives, we used it for the Shared Services Program. So we applied with the town, the county, and supported by all the Chief Mount Salt Waste Authority members to do enhanced recycling facilities and remote trailers in all the rural transfer stations.
Right.
And what happened though, I'll defend the province to touch on this, although we all like to have a common enemy. But I'll defend them here a little bit. They shifted mid-stream the focus of that grant and eliminated all capital. Because they knew the intermunicipal collaboration framework was coming up, and they were gonna have to spend all of their allocation on getting us all to work together, and hiring expensive consultants and lawyers. So they canned the capital portion after we had applied. And then, so we, we struck out on that one. Although it was a really good application, incredibly strong application.
The same thing happened with the emergency services, 'cause they had a grant in for around $400,000 per capita, where it's, you know, trucks and stuff. And they turned it down too, and yet they were very positive that we were gonna get it. And I was involved in that one. So we lost out on two. Mayor, you had a comment, and then Counselor Sel.
What I wanted to ask, Jeff, you presenting us a budget through those big sheets that is balanced, I mean.
Correct.
You have the revenue, you have the expenses, so. This is a, a list that is not funded at this point.
The wish list.
In other words, well, yeah. So in other words, what our task will have to be is try to figure out which one we feel is important, and then figure out how we're going to manage to raise, what to pay for it, in other words. Or by eliminating something that's already here, and replacing it with that, and then figuring out what will happen to those projects that we might not fund through the budget as presented. So essentially, that is a task we have.
And remember, council, we have an idea internally of all the capital stuff in the budget of what, what could bump and what the consequence that is. So that's what we report back, saying, "Look, here's what we're proposing, we fund it by not paving Fifth Avenue." As an example, as a legitimate example. The paving's poor on Fifth Avenue, you turn at the provincial building and you go to the junior high, not a nice street. But no one's fallen in. So do we wanna free up $375,000? Well, we don't pave Fifth Avenue, as an example, or we do just the two, just to the 200 block. You know, for example, so, so those are things, Second Avenue, here's another example. As you know, we've been doing Second Avenue right from Main Street, we're up to Seventh now. As of this year now, we're done with all the cast iron, we're replacing all the cast iron lines. We're now into, well, the water's asbestos cement and the sewer, I think, is PVC. So we're into more modern piping, and the integrity is better. Now, we have in the budget to finish that and go all the way to Ninth, and be done with it till we're into PVC. But there isn't a, there's no alarm bells ringing saying that that has infrastructure problems if we don't do it this year. Now, we're kicking the can down the road. Of course we are. We still got asbestos cement water lines under Second Avenue. They're good, but they're not lasting forever. They've been in there since the 60s, or the 50s in some cases. But that's one where we could say, "Okay, let's do one block, let's just do one." That's gonna free up 210 grand. And it was partially MSI and partially federal gas tax. We would tell you if it fit some of these other priorities, and we would adjust that way, right?
Yeah.
So those are some things, we know internally that if you come and say, "We wanna see the spray park in the November second draft funded, and we wanna see the storm sewer funded, and the census funded." Great, we'll do that, we'll bring you back a funded budget. And then we're just gonna show you what we're proposing to, to change.
The only thing that is not there, if you don't mind me saying, the spray park shows the capital expenditure, but it doesn't, doesn't have the maintenance cost for the following year afterwards, right? So that's only a partial picture.
That's right. Yeah, this was focused on capital.
Counselor Sel. I think you answered my question, Jeff, but in reality, if we have some time to spend on a lot of these items in our meeting and planning session, then we have a better idea of what it is, the direction we can give you.
Well, the recreation piece is on the agenda. So I would feel fairly comfortable that almost everything in the, in the budget and on this list based on recreation is gonna get touched on. You know, we're gonna understand your priority really well there. And so that'll help a lot.
So basically, we've got the information now, we can discuss it then in the planning session.
Sure.
And give you that direction.
Sure, yeah. Because what we want to do is, we wanna bring you back a second draft on the 28th of November, that's getting us that incremental step closer. And that's the point the US council need to decide if we need to maybe have another evening where we spend two hours just to tidy up some loose ends before the December 8? December 9? I don't remember, no, 12th, December 12th meeting in December. So, yeah, that's, that's completely fair, councilor. But I hope this gives you a little bit more context into this thing. And helps understand where that's coming from.
I really appreciate the background, because I haven't been involved.
Sure.
So it's great, great information.
Well, and it makes more sense now.
Good, and I don't want especially new counselors to think that it's a bad thing that we're taking longer than the fourth year of the last council did, that's how it should be. If we whip through this budget in the same speed we did the fourth year, thank you by the way, previous counselors, then, like George said, you're not asking the questions. Right? You should be questioning, "Give me an idea of why we're prioritizing this over this," and there's everything, I got nothing to withhold, or hide, or not tell you, or this is reflecting the last council's priorities, and that's what it is. So I, we'll take as much time as needs to happen, for sure.
Great. So, are we ready to move on to the next?
May I suggest a final break?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Do a little lunch? We have some snacks again, cheese, fruit, and stuff we can bring up quick too, if you wanna adjourn for a few minutes.
And Chris got a comment, and then we'll, then we'll, we gotta have a motion to.
I wanted to take a picture of PJ.
Yeah, so, we wanna actually get individual pictures, if you're comfortable, of all of you for business cards. We're trying to get those ready for AUMA. So, put on your best smile.
Okay, we have a motion, all in favor?
So yeah, where we can grab you now and after, we'll just take a quick picture and.